... The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First down the agenda is government operations. Cindy Garick, Lauren Zetti.
I guess I'll come up here because I'm paying in the back and I can't see, can't hear, and whatever else.
Tough to get old.
Okay. County Board of Supervisors has requested a briefing from the Seneca County IDA on the pending sale of Hillside Campus. Anyone here to address this issue tonight? Hi. Come on up.
Actually, Sarah, I'll move that.
So, I was more prepared to answer questions as opposed to providing a specific briefing. So, I'd like to just open it up to if, you know, people have specific things they want to know regarding the sale. I'm more than happy to ask. I believe the IDA Council, Rob Halpin, is going to be joining us on the phone if he's not on already. And then we have our deputy director here, Pat Jones, and our chairman of the board, Steve Russo.
How long was the RFP open for?
So, the RFP, let me get all my dates out here so I'm 100% correct. So, we posted the RFP on our website with a press release on June 10th. The deadline for submissions were July 17th. And the press release notifying the public of the sale, as well as of a windshield tour that we conducted of the property on June 25th, was posted to local media, including Finger Lakes One, Finger Lakes Times, newsbreak.com, Finger Lakes Daily News, all between June 10th and June 14th. So, over a month.
Was there any discussion by the IDA to put it out, another RFP? Only since there was one, only one taker?
We had interest from another party, from New York City. And the property came up and did the windshield tour. It never amounted to anything. Turns out that his timeline for what he was looking was much longer. You know, we have substantial costs associated with maintaining the Hillside property, just from when we've taken over, the cost of maintenance and utilities since April of this year. We've accumulated about $98,000 in total that we've spent on this property.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else from the committee? Hold on, guys. So, I'd also like to ask a couple of questions, like it was the, how is it legal to do the sale at $65,000? When I'm looking to see, I'm sorry, I thought I had this figure in front of me. The assessment was assessed at, was it the?
So, the assessment for the property is about $3.8 million, which we've been grieving with the assessor. In the grievance process, we were turned down by the Board of Assessment Review, saying that there was a lack of information provided. So, we had an appraisal done of the property. That appraisal was given to us on August 5th, which was after our bids had been received. And that appraisal came in at $350,000.
That's what I thought.
But the IDA is not legally obligated to sell the property at market value. The appraisal was done because we needed to have one done in order to give our 90-day notice to the state of the sale and to help us with the grievance process for the assessment. Our goal was to make the property more marketable to a potential buyer because currently the property is tax exempt with the IDA being the owner. So, no taxes are currently paid on it.
And the current buyer knows it's assessed, your appraisal, it doesn't mean that's the official word, but the appraisal is at $350,000?
Yes, he is aware.
So, I'd like to ask our county attorney, is that correct, sir, that the IDA can sell for, if it's listed at $350,000 for a $65,000 bid, is that legal? Or did they need to go to the state in order to get approval for that?
They've done is they've made their application to the state to confirm the sale.
So, you did have to go to the state to apply to be able to do this?
For any sale of the property, we have to supply a letter giving the state 90 days to approve or to come back to us with changes.
I don't think you had to do that when you sold it to the depot, to him?
We have.
You did. Okay. So, is this 90 days going then, county attorney, to a different state authority, like whoever oversees the IDA? Do you know that? Because I have something.
I have, I mean, I've seen the letter. I can't, I just can't recall specifically what it is, but it has to go through the executive office. So, it'll end up going through, I believe, I mean, I think it goes through Cuomo's office, among other things, but because the governor actually has to sign up on it.
So, it goes to the governor, the state assembly, the state senate, and I believe the authorities' budget office. And I'm not sure if I'm forgetting any.
So, the sale is not completed until it goes through all those proper channels?
Correct.
Also, does, county attorney, does this board through this county have any kind of say where we can send anything to any of those authorities?
Yeah. I mean, we can submit comment.
I think we need to send a comment. I mean, if this board so chooses.
I mean, there are a variety of things that can be done, but that's, I mean, that's the one thing we certainly can do is submit additional comments or issues to the approving authority.
That's correct. So, this board may want to consider that. The other thing is that it's such a low figure and that there was only one solid bid. I know that I've had many phone calls. I don't know about other supervisors. In fact, right now, I think I've said enough. I may come back to ask further questions, but anybody else from this board want to ask anything? Yes?
I'd like to know what the future for the wastewater treatment facility or how it's going to accommodate any use for those buildings without major investment on the wastewater treatment plant and how that affects the other jurisdictions.
So, currently, Mr. Martin, the county and the IDA are working together to continue with the decommissioning of the wastewater treatment plant. And we are assessing what other options there might be to provide service to both the Hillside Campus and to the First Light Campus out at the depot. But that is going to require DEC.
Can you tell us a little bit about, are there any terms or conditions to the sale regarding a pilot agreement? And if so, is that pilot agreement issued by this board? Is it issued by the IDA? Can you tell us a little bit about how that works, please?
So, as part of Mr. Martin's bid, he did outline a few contingencies, one being that he would be seeking a pilot agreement to allow him time to work with the assessor to come up with what, you know, they felt would be a mutually agreeable assessment for the property. So, given that, the IDA has not approved a pilot yet. We have certainly discussed the possibility with our board. We are waiting on an official application from Mr. Martin for financial assistance, which would be his formal way of applying for a pilot. Essentially, what we are anticipating is upon receipt of that application, it would go before our board for an inducement resolution. A public hearing would be held on the matter. And then it would go for a final resolution before the board, probably in the next month or two following the initial application.
And if I can follow up, county attorney, does this board have any say over the IDA's pilot agreements?
Not particularly, no.
I have another question to tag into that. So, you're saying that he looks like he may be applying for another pilot for this purchase. My question is, has he fulfilled all his obligations on his first pilot with the procurement of the depot?
Yes.
Can you give me the numbers, the figures of the people that are working there?
So, in regards to, we have two projects with Mr. Martin currently, one with Deerhaven Park, which is the white deer tour business. That pilot was three years. His application specified no new jobs, which means that when we report to the state, that anything above that is just an added bonus. He has actually, in fact, added five jobs since we last reported. Those reports are called our Paris reports. They're all on our website. It's all public information. And then in regards to the second project, that is with Seneca Dairy Systems. And that one actually doesn't go into effect until the 2021, 2022 school year. So, we're actually not tracking any data on that yet because the project hasn't officially started.
In the Deerhaven Park, you have five jobs?
Yes.
Full-time?
Yeah. That would be for Mr. Martin to disclose, but yes, I believe so.
Yeah.
I would like to have that in writing, or the tours are like once a month and they're drive-through tours. But that's fine. We can look into that.
That's public records, right?
Yes.
You just said it's on their website?
Time jobs?
Yes. So, if you look at our annual Paris reports is what they're called, those are the reports that we have to submit to the state about our investments and the incentive packages that we award.
Does the IDA follow up on someone receiving a pilot program? Do they follow up or they just take the data that's provided to them at their word? Or does somebody from the IDA say, okay, physically check up on five employees working there, what their current wages are, et cetera, et cetera?
So, we follow up with them in the sense that we reach out every year to get that data. We don't do a physical visit to their premises when we do so.
So, these five people could be under the books for white deer and working at Walmart type of thing. I'm exaggerating, obviously. They could be working at another facility from the person completing the paperwork, basically. We would never know that, right?
That would be a question for the person who has the project with us.
They provide copies of the NY authorities to show how many jobs they have. They're required to do that.
Again, but is somebody following up from the IDA saying specifically that we know for sure that these five people are working at Deerhaven Park? Are they feeding the deer? Are they cleaning the cages? You know, again, I'm exaggerating. I'm being sarcastic, but I'm saying, in any pilot, I'm not just picking on this pilot, is there any follow-up that says these people are actually working here? And they might be working at another facility that, you know, the person applying or in charge of the pilot owns? That's a simple question. I don't know. No, no follow-up.
Earl, would you like to speak to this, or?
I can agree to make the, any records public to you, but I can't disclose certain data or information in a public setting.
Well, again, I know the records are already public. I understand that, okay? And I can put anything down on the records and I can say I'm employing five people here, but unless somebody actually checks.
Well, that would be up to the IDA, someone to check. Correct. I agree.
If somebody from the IDA checked it.
You know, respectfully, that would be nearly impossible for us to do when we do pilots with major employers like ITT Gould and Bonadent, who have hundreds of employees. You know, we can't go and physically count every single person. You could ask for their records, though.
So, WT form, W2s, employment records, tax filing, you don't have the authority to collect that data?
We do get, we do get the tax forms.
You do?
Yes, copies of those.
Okay. Thank you.
And it shows who the employer is, in the name of the employee, whether they're part-time or full-time.
Okay. Thank you.
So, another question is, I've been having phone calls from people that are saying that they're not happy that disclosure about what is going to take place there is not coming forthright. And actually, somebody foiled the copies and there were a lot of things that were redacted. So, my question would be, can Mr. Martin not tell the public what his plans are for the Hillside Campus?
So, the redacted bid did include some of his plans. And let me just briefly outline what some of those are for you. So, he is proposing to move the white deer tour headquarters to the Hillside Campus. He's proposing to establish a campsite with bunker cabins and a playground for campers and to include temporary office space for his companies. So, there are other items that were redacted for purposes of trade secret and that it would, you know, potentially harm his business with his competition locally.
I mean, I don't know what competition.
He has every legal right to do so.
Right. I don't know what competition there is, though, if there was only one bid. But my other question is this, son, what are the plans for the buildings that are falling down and they're full of asbestos and whatnot? How is that going to be taken care of, especially if he's planning on bringing campsites and bunkers over there? What about the buildings that are there?
That's up to Mr. Martin, but obviously, this property is going to involve millions of dollars in investment, which is why no one else was willing to step up and put a bid in for the property.
Okay. So, the word on the street too, though, and you know, I'm going to be forthright because I'm all about transparency, is that Mr. Martin and another person plan on buying this for a penny. And I'd love to have our assessor over here speak about the $350,000 assessment and now $65,000, okay? I may call on you, sir.
No one is indicating that the property would be assessed for $65,000.
No, but that's what it was bought for, ma'am.
Anybody could have submitted whatever they wanted to. And I think with this. Nobody was willing to pay even.
I don't want to speak for the full board, but I think this full board and the public that I'm getting phone calls from is not happy about the $65,000 sale.
Then they should have submitted a bid.
That doesn't mean they have to submit a bid, ma'am. It means that they're not happy with the way things have been overseen and how maybe we should have tried a little bit harder to look for more bidders, okay? Putting it on a website isn't really what I'd call throwing it out there. Now, I will ask Mr. Clear about assessments. And if they went through the proper channels, please explain that. You're much better at it than any of us.
As far as?
As they went to Mr. Martin's, talking with the assessor, the Board of Assessment Review, they have procedures.
The appraised value on the property is what it should bring at the time of an open sale, of a good, marketable sale. Doesn't mean, and I think our county attorney can vouch for this, that it doesn't mean that anybody can sell a property for anything, but that does, they could sell it for a dollar. It doesn't mean that that's what the assessment will be at the end of the day. The theory behind it is, is because it is vacant property, if I was the assessor in that area, I would probably look at it and say it's not going to be valued at $65,000 at the end of the day, simply for the fact that they only had one bid. It wasn't a good valid sale. It may be $350,000. It may be a million dollars. There's a lot that goes into it. And then Mr. Martin would also have to understand that at the end of the day, if he bought it for $65,000, grieved it, had a bank-certified appraisal, the assessor would look at it and say, okay, your appraisal looks good, or there's some flaws in it, here's your new assessed value on the property. As Mr. Martin tends to improve on the property and he develops it, it could increase in value. It could, if it sits there and falls down, it could decrease in value. So, there's a lot of things that could go into the assessment of the property as well as just not the sale. One sale doesn't mean that that's what it's going to be. So, at the end of the day, if somebody buys it for $65,000, Mr. Martin cannot go to, I mean, he can, he can do anything he pleases, but for him to go to the Board of Assessment Review and ask for an assessment of $65,000, and if that board granted it, I would find that would be very unethical.
Right. And so, that being the way, it's already been appraised at $350,000, which, you know, is he willing then to agree to pay the taxes on that?
Yes.
Correct?
So, we have spoken with him about it and the IDA is working with the assessor. We filed, after the grievance was denied, we filed a notice of petition with the assessor and the Board of Assessment Review to give us time to get the appraisal, to get all the information. So, we are currently talking with Ann Morgan and seeing if we can come to mutually agreeable terms, you know, to lower the assessment from the 3.8 million.
When did you say that the appraisal was done?
The appraisal was submitted to the IDA on August 5th.
August 5th.
From his appraisal, from his.
No, we hired an appraiser.
You hired an appraiser? Okay. Got it. Got it.
So, it was after the time that the purchase was made?
Yes, although we had contracted the appraisal firm in the beginning of June, well before the bids were submitted. It took them some time and they had some other priorities that they had to take care of, which is why there was a delay.
So, can I ask, why was there not an appraisal done before the time of the sale or before it was advertised so that the IDA knew what to accept or whether it wasn't a good price or not? Why was the property put up for sale not knowing the exact market value on the property? Or don't you know?
So, the IDA is not legally obligated to sell it for market value because we do economic development. We have some leniency. But, you know, aside from that, none of us realistically expected to receive even the market value for the property, given the current condition, given the fact that it was public knowledge at the time that the county's been trying to decommission the wastewater treatment plant. You know, there are a lot of other factors. The electric at that property is actually tied into Hillside, so the IDA has actually been paying for county electric to run the wastewater treatment plant and to run the 911 tower and the water tower, which we actually just recently wrapped up negotiations regarding some reimbursement for that. So, there were a lot of complicating factors that we knew would make that property very difficult for us to receive.
But you did state that the assessment on the property was, what, 3.5 million or so?
3.8, I believe.
Or whatever. So, it is the IDA's responsibility to be economically responsible, right?
Yes.
So, at the time, even if you didn't know, you know, you don't have to sell, obviously, we know that you don't have to sell it for market value, but there should have been some, I would have thought, some homework done to say, okay, where do we start this bidding? If Mr. Martin came in and said, I'll give you $10,000, he knew that was a very low number and that was, I mean, that's all it's worth to him at the time, but he knew that was a low number, $65,000 on a $3.8 million assessment. So, I just thought, I'm just thinking, maybe Cindy, you're thinking the same thing, that maybe a little homework should have been done to, and it should be on the market a little bit longer to bring in as much.
You know, one of the factors for us, like I said, this property has cost the IDA almost $100,000 just since April of this year, which is something that we could not afford to sustain, especially going into the winter months and having to winterize the property. So, it was, and while it's just sitting there, it's, you know, falling into more disrepair. So, it was to our advantage and to the community's advantage to see somebody in there to start to redevelop it and to utilize it again.
And does Mr. Martin have a timeframe when he plans on starting the redevelopment process? Is it now? Is it later? Is it a year? Can you disclose that?
Mr. Martin currently has a lease with the IDA to allow him to use the property until we close on the sale. So, he is currently, you know, working in there, using it as temporary office space and has a few people in there that are working for him.
When's the closing date?
We don't have one yet. We have to wait for the 90 days to pass. So, that letter was sent out on September 11th to the state, so closing date would probably be early December.
And so, the IDA is still paying for the operation and maintenance of the building?
Part of the lease that we negotiated was that Mr. Martin takes care of the utilities and maintenance during the lease term.
So, he's paying a monthly lease at the moment?
So, he is paying utilities and rent and in exchange, we receive the upfront purchase price.
He's paying utilities and rent?
He's paying utilities and maintenance, excuse me. And we, he also paid the IDA the upfront purchase price of $65,000.
What do the utility costs on a weekly, on a monthly basis?
Utilities, let me pull that up. So, NYSIG, which is obviously the primary utility out there, is about between $8,000 and $10,000 a month usually for electric and gas on the property, even though it's been unoccupied for many months.
That's astonishing that would be that much. If there's, if everything is closed down and it's unoccupied.
And this is something that we had been, you know, working with the energy company on. Obviously, it's complicated by the fact right now that there aren't separate meters for the county services out there. But, you know, that's a big factor and, you know, part of why we've been.
So, he's paying $8,000 a month?
Yes. And that's a rough estimate because obviously.
And that's going directly to the IDA?
That goes directly to NYSIG.
But that doesn't come off the totals at, if this takes another three months, at $8,000. It's $24,000. That doesn't come off the $65,000. That's in addition.
Correct.
What I'm saying, though, he's paying the IDA and then the IDA is paying the bill.
Right now, the way we have it set up is actually that NYSIG is billing Mr. Martin directly for the utilities at this point.
Even though he doesn't own it?
Correct.
Okay.
And he's paid this whole 65 upfront?
Yes.
And if the deal falls through, then the IDA just has to reimburse him that $65,000?
Closing hasn't happened yet.
I understand that.
The way it's structured is that if the deal fell through, the IDA would retain the $65,000.
Oh, okay.
So, you get to keep the 65 grand if after 90 days, the state doesn't approve it?
Yes.
And he's put in all the money for utilities?
Yes, since the lease.
Boy, that's a big.
In September.
I think.
Thank you.
My only other thing is if it does fall through, he's had the rent, he's been there. And quite possibly then, if the state comes around and says, well, that's way too low, you know, what are you guys thinking of, blah, 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 you'd put it back out there and he could actually come back with another offer. Correct? Is that correct, county attorney, that that could possibly be another option?
I'm not familiar with the direct issues on how they would handle a resale if it's turned up, turned down.
Nobody can answer that?
We've never had that happen before, so.
Yeah, well, guess what? This is Seneca County, so, okay? Anything that can go wrong has gone wrong. And you yourself just said there's been many mistakes out there and many things that have come up where negotiations have had to take place, such as the electric. Okay. Sorry. Maybe that's what I said. But I would like to know that. So, if the deal falls through, you guys get to keep the 65 grand and he's paid all the utilities, he could turn around and actually put another offer in that may be more of a reasonable offer that the state would take. Does that sound like a fair statement?
It's probably a logical progression of things. I would.
I guess nobody, no legal person.
Remember that logic has nothing to do with state regulation and many of the statutes that we have for this.
Excuse me?
I said that logic doesn't always apply with how things can work coming out of.
No, but you're a lawyer, so if the deal falls through, they could put it out for bid again, he could submit another bid.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Very good. Anybody else have any more questions?
Yeah.
I'd like to revisit the conversation around pilots. I'm new to this board, so the first year sitting on this board. Can you just speak a little bit to the IDA's authority to issue pilots? What sort of properties you have the ability to issue pilots on? How long you have the authority to issue pilots, if you can renew them? A little crash course for those of us that are new, if you could, please?
Sure. Be happy to. So, we are empowered by New York State law as a public authority to grant pilots, which are property in lieu of tax or payment in lieu of tax exemptions, to primarily commercial businesses, commercial industrial. We also are able to do tourism. One of the things that is not generally allowed for IDAs to do pilots for is retail, unless it can be made the case that it's a tourism business. So, years ago, the IDA did a pilot with the Waterloo Premium Outlets because of the large number of, you know, out of the country and out of state guests that that location attracts. Generally, each IDA has to have its own uniform tax exemption policy or UTEP, and that policy dictates what the standards are for that IDA's pilot agreements. So, in Seneca County's case, our maximum pilot term is 20 years. We can deviate for certain reasons that are allowed in that. Traditionally, our board doesn't like to do a full 20-year pilot unless it's special circumstances because of a project's particular economics or financing. And then really, you know, the specific terms on payment amounts always differ, but traditionally in Seneca County, we always try to do an exemption only on the value of the new improvements. We don't approve pilots that alter or reduce pre-existing taxes. So, whatever somebody pays with a pilot is going to be more than what they paid previously, if that makes sense.
Sure. Yes. So, just to clarify, the IDA has authority essentially to issue a pilot to any commercial business in the county?
Yes. So, we have an application process. Companies have to fill out and, you know, we go through a series of resolutions. We have to do a cost-benefit analysis for each project. If we are looking to grant more than $100,000 in exemptions, whether that be property, sales, or mortgage recording tax, we have to hold a public hearing, which is then followed, you know, if all goes well, by a final resolution that approves the exemption in question.
So, how does the assessment of the property by the assessor, how does that play with your ability to issue a pilot? Is the assessor essentially rendered meaningless and you have the authority to issue the pilot? Or is there a negotiation? How does that work? How does that work?
So, that's a good question. The way that it works is we have to determine what we think would be the new assessed value of a property with its improvements. And usually, we will do that in conjunction with consultation with the assessor to try to figure out what is it currently, what do we project it to be with the new investment. And then essentially, the pilot will affect the assessor and that the property comes off the tax roll and they have a set amount that they pay every year that's divvied up proportionally to the county, the school, and the town based on their tax rates.
So basically, if I may.
Yeah.
Like, let's say Mr. Martin, he buys it for $65,000. He has agreed with the Board of Assessment Review and the town assessor for the assessment of $350,000, okay? The IDA then issues him a pilot. He does a million dollars' worth of improvements. They issue him a million dollar pilot program. The assessor can raise it to $1.3 million, the assessment, depending on the equalization rate and everything. But the assessment will go up to, let's say, $1.3 million. But there'll be a million dollar, essentially exemption on the new improvements or whatever they decide that it's going to bring to the area. So then he'd have a million dollar exemption on the property. He only pays taxes on the $350,000.
Yep. So after you pass your resolutions and you hold your public hearing, are there any other authorities that need to weigh in on the pilot? Does the state have a say? Does the county have a say?
So, you know, the county and the local municipalities are all notified before we have a public hearing, so we have to send out notices via FedEx to the affected municipalities outlining.
And the school districts.
And yes, the school districts are included. As far as when the public hearing is, to allow them an opportunity to comment, you know, obviously, in most cases, we try to contact everybody individually beforehand to, you know, let them know of what's happening. But that's why the IDA makes every effort to only have the exemption be based on whatever the value is of the new addition, so that we're not negatively impacting anyone's budgets when it comes down to it, so that you're getting, you know, more tax revenue essentially than you were before as opposed to a reduction.
Thank you. One more question. With the anticipation of a sale before the end of the year, does the IDA have any anticipation of a further lease agreement in any way? The real question that I'm asking is, with this property currently off of the tax rules, are you anticipating pushing a lease forward into the future that is going to affect further tax payments?
So because Mr. Martin has, you know, mentioned in his bid, like I said previously, that he would be looking for a pilot to allow time to negotiate with the assessor, what would happen is, you know, he would submit an application. If the IDA board approves the pilot, we would look to close on the pilot at the same time we close on the sale. And the way that pilots are structured is we do what's called a lease-leaseback. So Mr. Martin would hold the deed to the property, but the IDA essentially uses its tax exempt status to be able to grant him the pilot. So he would pay, you know, whatever the agreed-upon pilot is, but he wouldn't necessarily pay taxes on the $3.8 million assessment.
And in the absence of a pilot, does Mr. Martin have the option to void the deal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Chairman.
Yes, you said you're in negotiations with the assessor and the zoning, the Board of Assessment Review.
So when we.
Let me finish, because I don't call in a negotiation dropping off a legal document down at the county clerk's office, the petition, which is a lawsuit against the town of Barre. And then you hide it for 30 days, because by law, you don't have to let anybody know. So the 30th day, then you send it to us on the last minute, more or less. And then in it, it said they're demanding that the assessment only be reduced to $180,000 for $149. And you call that negotiation, and you never called the assessor until almost September. I don't think that's negotiations. That's a lawsuit. And you're taking, costing us money to have to defend that lawsuit against the IDA. Next thing, I don't know why the IDA is spending their money, but Mr. Martin could go out after he takes over property and then pay the money to beat a lawsuit to sue the town of Barre. You've got two government entities suing each other. That's pretty sad.
Thank you very much for that information. Any other questions from anybody else on this board?
Yep, I still got more.
Okay.
I figured nationwide search. You know, put any money, effort into trying to find a buyer for that. We've had people from Pennsylvania at one time, Hillside outside the area, who were happy just to do that. Have you been to the town planning board, Mr. Martin, to see if some of his redacted ideas are permissible in the zoning code? That should be done too. And the town's looking at taking the lead agency on the pilot, if that's legal. We're researching that, so. Do you know anything about that? If the towns can take lead agency or approve the pilots versus the IDA?
That's something I'm not familiar with in this case.
I don't think this negotiation, this suing, we had to be presented by what, September 15th in court? We had to appear in court. I don't call that negotiation, having to appear in court on September 15th. That's how the IDA operates. Do you have insurance on that building for the last 20 years on all the property at the, or does Hillside have insurance on it?
Yes, we have insurance on the buildings. We have insurance, yes.
How much is the value of the insurance?
Let me see if I have it here. So to date, the IDA has paid about $3.7 thousand in liability insurance. I am not 100% on the specifics of what the coverage is. I'd have to look it up and get back to you.
Fire insurance?
I'd have to look into details and get back to you on that.
I'd like to know that, if there is any, or if Hillside covered with insurance.
Hillside covered it until their lease expired on March 31st, and then we picked up the coverage back in April.
Was that property coverage, fire coverage?
Fire and liability.
So what was the assessed value on the fire policy?
I think it was close to 3 million. It was.
It's already worth $165.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sarah.
So I think we're all set. Thank you.
I think my chairman of the board would like to make a comment.
I guess one thing that was maybe, when we first learned about Hillside, them moving out, we, what do we do with the property? I mean, obviously, Hillside was moving out, they didn't want it. The first thing we did was not, what's the assessed value? What's the worth of the property? Instead, we went out to an engineering firm to have them take a good look at what's the realistic use of the property? What are we facing in terms of potential liability? And as Cindy said, when going through that, it was going to cost millions between roof replacement, asbestos. So when we looked at it, we were there with a property that had really just a, and I don't want to say, I don't know why you're buying it or, but, you know, where someone would have to go and spend millions of dollars on the buildings to bring them up to reasonable use. Also, the wastewater treatment plant was disappearing, so now they have to, at their expense, how do they take care of the wastewater treatment? Between that, electrical, a lot of other issues, so looking at the property, although it maybe is assessed at 350,000, the real value someone coming in would have to put in a substantial amount of money. So maybe it looks like 65,000 is a fire sale, but in a sense, it's almost like a negative type assessment, if you want to look at it like that. So really, the IDA was looking at, here's a property that needs millions of dollars. As Pete said, we've spent $98,000 just to, for maintenance, basic upkeep. There was winter coming up, winterization, other type things. So it really became a money pit. And looking at it, did we want to go continue spending, you know, over $100,000 a year to maintain a property to maybe get some other use? So that was, just wanted to look at that. We didn't look at an assessment in terms of what should we be, what is this really worth? We looked at it from an engineering perspective. What is a property sort of good for? What's the condition? How much money had to be put into it? And with that realization that was very a negative type thing, we wanted to.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So when you guys, when the IDA develops these pilots, you take payments in lieu of taxes from the person that has the pilot agreement with you, correct?
Correct.
So when that payment in lieu of taxes is made directly to the IDA, is there anybody at the IDA that figures in the long run that you may have to pay when a business moves out? You may have to pay $100,000 a year or $50,000 a year for upkeep? Or is that just neglected and not thought about? I guess my point is, is this should have all been part of the whole master plan. You're claiming that Hillside moved out unexpectedly or rapidly, and now you've got all these costs associated with the property that you owned, but yet you've been making money off the property for the past how many years? And also, to the fact of the matter that you're selling it way below the price that...
Yeah.
So I understand what you're saying is you don't want to pay the money on it.
Right.
Or the IDA doesn't, but at the end of the day, you've also made money off the building. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the rent was, ended up being what, $15,000 per quarter? And that was the rent to Hillside. Going back, Hillside, the property was part of the Army Depot overall sale. So essentially, it went from the Army to the IDA for reuse, and then went to, what, before Hillside was?
Kids' Peace.
Kids' Peace. So it went to Kids' Peace, went to Hillside. So essentially, IDA was somewhat of a owner sort of conduit for the property.
Right.
So while as long as someone was using it, we leased it, and then walking away, now we're, I want to say we're stuck with the property, but that type of thing.
Which goes back to maybe there should have been some more time and consideration into trying to get a more respectable offer, is all my thought is.
Again, it's one of these that, you know, if someone's going to.
37 days or whatever it was.
Is someone going to actually purchase that?
Anyone else here?
Yes, please.
Kyle?
Can, while Hillside was present on the campus, was the property tax exempted? Or did you have a pilot agreement in place with Hillside? Or is that not how it works?
Property was tax exempted, it was owned by the IDA. There was no pilot. Hillside was simply a straight lease. So the IDA owned it and Hillside wanted to.
I hear it. And then I think the alarming information here that I've heard tonight is that as recently as March, a $3 million insurance policy was carried on the building. And while Hillside was present on the campus, were there buildings that were unusable? Were there any buildings that were condemned? Can you tell me a little bit about the status of the site while Hillside was present?
Yeah, I'd be better.
I would say 90% of the buildings.
I'm so sorry to ask. Would you be able to come to the microphone, please?
I would say 90% of the buildings were occupied. I think there's two that they did not occupy. They did demolish, I would say, four or five buildings once they took occupancy 18 years ago.
And can you speak to the difference of the status from the moment that they left at that 90% occupation to today? Has anything changed? Have the buildings deteriorated? Has the maintenance been kept up? I've heard you claim that you have pretty extensive maintenance costs, but now, I think I heard buildings are falling down and asbestos treatment, that doesn't sound consistent.
Buildings are not falling down, however, they need significant work with roofs. The streets need repaving. There was some leaking pipes. I think it was close to $1 million in cost that would be required within the next 12 months to bring it up to a state, what an engineer has considered a state status.
Up to a $3 million, back to $3 million valuation perhaps? Just, that's not a fair question to ask, but.
You're talking 70-year-old buildings.
I heard some were built as recently as the '70s and '80s, is that correct?
The majority were in the '50s. The gymnasium, I believe, was in the '70s, and the childcare center was in the '70s. The rest are.
So I've never been to the campus, but this sounds like there's quite a few amenities there, a gymnasium, childcare. I heard there's a theater on site, is that true?
Bowling alley, too.
A bowling alley.
Bowling alley is gone.
Bowling's gone? I don't know, gone.
That one was a depot.
Used to bowl there all the time.
Can you speak a little bit to the state of the gymnasium, the theater, the childcare center, things like that?
The childcare center was converted by Hillside to office space. They did not have a need for a childcare center. The gymnasium is still in what I would consider decent shape, but it hasn't been through a winter yet with.
Fair enough.
The theater, when I was in there last month, it smells a little musty, but other than that, it's standing.
Can you speak to what percentage of the property Mr. Martin is currently occupying? You said that 90% of the property was occupied by Hillside. 90% of the buildings on the property was occupied by Hillside. Can you speak to what percentage Mr. Martin is currently using? Or can Ms. Davis or Mr. Martin speak to that?
Yeah, we're, we're working on two of the buildings currently that we intend to continue to use for the.
You are only using two buildings or you are working on two buildings?
Repairing and rebuilding two of the buildings currently, but no repairs in the remainder. But currently, as of today, we're focusing on a couple of the buildings.
I'm sorry. How many buildings are you currently occupying through your use right now on the Hillside campus?
How many people?
You are only using two buildings currently. And how many buildings are on the site?
14.
14, I believe.
14. So again, just to clarify, you're using two buildings, you are repairing two buildings?
Yes.
And then the other eight?
So that we can use them immediately.
So are there anybody in the buildings right now using the office space?
Yes, there are.
Are the buildings being prepared? Is there anybody that's in them now?
No, they're being repaired currently, so that we can use them.
Thank you.
Kyle?
So a lot of, what I wanted to ask, Kyle already asked, but who was responsible for the upkeep of the buildings while Hillside occupied them? Was it Hillside? And is anybody monitoring that to get them in such bad shape, why they just let them go down so bad and then just left?
It's not as though they neglected them, it's just over time, the cost to maintain them was so expensive that they cannot, they no longer could afford to stay there.
Okay, thank you.
The operational costs were so high.
All right, is there any other questions? So, thank you very much. So we're going to move on to, I'm not quite sure if this is going to be unfinished business or new business, but from everything that we've heard tonight, I would like to make a motion to my committee that we direct our county attorney to send a letter. And I know if they've already sent the application in on September 11th, then this needs to be done as soon as possible. And I guess before I make the motion, what I'm going to ask the county attorney is, if I get a majority out of this committee, can we take it to the full board tonight to draft the letter to send along with the application on the county's concerns?
You have a special meeting called.
Correct. Can we do that if it passes out of committee tonight?
You would have to do, you know, your rule.
Rule 29.
Rule 29.
We can do it though, correct? Yes, okay.
There's not, it's not a monetary matter.
Okay, very good, thank you. So I'm going to make a motion from this committee that we direct our county attorney to draft the letter to be sent to the proper authorities where the application has went, giving a lot of our concerns that I think I heard here tonight from many of our board members. I don't know how to make it anymore. I'm sure Dave can maybe add to that.
If I may, are you asking to write a letter supporting the assessor's initial assessment?
I'm asking.
This would be, the only thing, the only thing that the state has is the option is to approve or disapprove the contract.
I think that, I think that I'd like. I think that, I think that I'd like this board to send a letter concerned that we're not approving it this time. There's too many unanswered questions. I'm appalled that the IDA is suing the town of Eric, didn't know about that. There's just so many unanswered, and there's so many conflicting stories here tonight that I think this board should put the brakes on it. So that's a motion, you know what I mean. Do I get a second?
I think it's worth consideration for the full board and further discussion, so I'll give you support.
Mike, want to weigh in?
I do want to weigh in. I don't know, it's been 55 minutes since we've been discussing it. I don't like some of the issues that went on with the sale. I don't like the idea that in the middle of a pandemic, it was a windshield option. I understand the IDA's position that it's a money pit and they're trying to unload it. I don't like the idea that it wasn't considered to put backup for an RFP, but again, I understand it. I don't quite understand, I don't believe that the buildings would have to be winterized since Hillside has been there as, 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 back in, I mean, left in March, which is this current year. So I think there's some exaggerations there, but I don't like the idea that we're, you know, directly going against the IDA, which is part of our, part of our county and part of our, you know, what we do as an operations type of thing. I think many of the questions that we had tonight, people ought to get more involved and know what's going on with the IDA. And go to IDA meetings to get educated versus using time here in county meetings. That's part of our responsibility. If you don't know what's going on, you should find out directly from the IDA. But anyway, so I'm not going to support it, Cindy.
Okay, so on favor, are you ready to vote?
No, I, I just wanted to say, I'm supporting this in committee, and I'm not quite sure how I'll vote in, in a general session, but my concern is for the inconsistencies between there, it feels like there are a number of inconsistencies from the IDA itself between the value of the property being high and Hillside carrying the insurance to the bid and the expectation that they would carry in, to the condition of the buildings, which I think I heard two or three different conflicting reports here, while the IDA's own report says that the buildings are all in poor condition. So for the amount of inconsistencies we're hearing, I'll end at support in committee.
In my experience with the IDA and many different projects, okay, there's always some controversy when the IDA provides pilot programs to different businesses. There's, there's always somebody who's not in favor of a pilot program going to different businesses or corporations. That's just part, I think, of the nature of what the IDA does.
I mean, it's, it's pretty hard to swallow when some of us pay a decent amount of taxes on a half acre, but somebody pays about the same on 1,000 acres, so I understand that.
Okay. All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Aye, opposed.
You're not voting, you got a vote in board. You're not out of committee, Ernie.
Ernie's on your.
Are you?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
We just, we just added him, Cindy.
Sorry? Now what? We have a two to two.
We have no action.
Motion is dead?
You have no, you're, you can't pass on a two to.
Okay, so you're okay with everything then, Ernie?
No, I'm not. I said I, I am opposing it. You got a building sold, you're pretty lucky maybe to get that price, you won't get anymore, and let the state make their decision.
Okay.
And go from there.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you. That's the, I think, public works, right? Up the page area. Work, Supervisor Trout?
Oh, issue one, Supervisors support additional work at Sampson's Veterans Memorial Cemetery. A second?
Second.
Motion made and probably seconded, discussion. Mitch?
As, as outlined in the proposed resolution, there is still some funding left in the grant that the county received to finish the inside of the former firehouse as the administration and chapel for services. We have requested a price from one of our original vendors for some additional furnishings, fixtures and equipment, FFNE as it is known, and asking the board for support, no, no county cost to this, to this proposed additional work at the cemetery.
No, we always like that. No extra money. Questions? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think there was supposed to be another issue. We had a property in Lowdy that we were going to talk about. Is anybody prepared to speak on that tonight?
Yes, I should have gotten a note out to the board. There's a little more prep work that needs to be done on my end to prepare this to come back, to move forward with the formal process. There is a buildings and land policy in place that, sorry, I'm having a little mic problem here, is going to require a little more work on my end, so I would anticipate that this would be before you in the next cycle.
Okay, thanks Mitch. And then under unfinished business, our favorite topic, county attorney? Or who wants to talk about it?
The IMA is complete in terms of the drafting. It has been approved by the towns of Seneca, or excuse me, the towns of Tire and Junius by their council. It'll have to be submitted to their boards. I still haven't received a response from Town of Seneca Falls Attorney. I'm waiting on a certification letter from Mr. Baker with Barton and La Judas. And as soon as we have that, we will submit it back out to the boards and for the county to review for final, final review. But the document is essentially done.
Closer than ever.
What exactly are you waiting for from Seneca Falls?
I sent, I sent out the draft, I think you got the, you've got a copy of.
Yes, yes.
And I haven't heard anything back from your attorney on that. That's, I guess that's, that's the only other question, that was the only other issue was to clarify that.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Mitch?
On a separate but parallel track from the IMA work that Dave's been leading and working with the towns and their council on, Sarah, Mike Farrar and I met with Mike's staff a few weeks back looking at options for how to create a fair and reasonable revenue stream to take care of the improvements that were called out in the Hunt study that I know has been provided to the board. There's two phases of work, initial phase work that, that Hunt felt should be done sooner rather than later was 42, 43,000, and then there was a second tier that was a little more than that. So based on flows and consumption of current users on 414 and looking at what the Loves Project may bring in, we've, we have a couple of different scenarios of how a reasonable additional line item on those, on those bills could create a, again, a revenue stream to be able to take care of those expenses. We've had some discussions that obviously would have to come both to the IDA board and the county board about if, if the IDA was to put some amount of that initial phase money up to take care of the repairs, to allow the title to transfer, how they could be reimbursed over time for the money that they would put upfront to do those initial repairs. So we're still working through that, whether it's a one-year, a two-year, a three-year amortization. There may be a couple of other potential, potential revenue streams for that, but we're not quite to a point to be able to bring that to the board for formal consideration. But we, I want to let everybody know that we've been working on that in addition to the IMA work that Dave's been leading. And I think now that we're in the football season, I think we are in the, in the red zone. And best case scenario would be in the next cycle, maybe to be able to, to maybe ask for a vote to finalize the approvals and, and bring this to closure.
That would be very exciting. Get it done before next year.
Be careful about the fumbles.
All right, anything else to come before public works? If not, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Trout. Next up is Public Health, Senator McCrevey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Issue number one, Supervisors support Bill S113 slash A4939, an act to amend the public health law in relation to the Unpredictable Nursing Home Inspection Act.
Bart, under the Water and Sewer Committee.
Bart. Got a motion and a second? Vicki, is there anything you need to update us with that?
I think Mrs. Charlotte Northridge, I wanted this on the table, so I don't know if you can keep to it, Cindy.
Do you feel comfortable with it? I mean, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, it's pretty cut and dry.
Right.
Okay.
Sorry. It's pretty cut and dry, so, you know, I'm not as familiar with it as Cindy, but she mentioned it at the last board meeting, I think, and wanted to bring this forward.
Okay. Any questions from the committee?
So basically, it means that inspections will not be, they will not know ahead of time when inspections are going to be happening. They will go at different shift times and because there's been a lot of problems with nursing homes. So, again, pretty cut and dry, folks. And it was supported by two Republican senators, Ort and Helmy, FYI.
Any other questions from the board? If not, we've had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Move on to issue number two, Supervisors support New York State Senate Bill S112 related to imposing a nursing home purchase moratorium on those who own or have owned failing facilities.
Support.
Second. Vicki, is there anything you need to update us with that?
Again, it's pretty self-explanatory, it goes along, again, Cindy brought this up when she brought the other one up, it's about owners not being able to purchase additional nursing homes if they have, their, nursing homes that they already own are substandard.
Or have deficiencies or violations that are already in place.
And who monitors that? Does the Health Department monitor those violations?
The New York State Department of Health.
So the county, I'm sorry, the county would, who would?
New York State Department of Health is the one that does the surveys, they do the inspections, they offer the, approve the sales, et cetera. The local Health Department is not.
So if there is violations on those facilities, then the state would deny the sale?
Well, it's in the Senate by Ort and Helmy to be able to pass these bills. Because what happens is you get nursing home companies from down in New York City, big companies that come in, they swoop in, they buy local nursing homes up, usually county-run facilities, and then they run them subpar. They get deficiencies, violations, but that, they go on to the next town and purchase another home.
Any other questions from the committee? Questions from the board? If not, we've had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Move on to issue number three, County Manager authorized and directed to sign a contract with the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for the Child Passenger Safety Program Grant.
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second.
Okay, this is the third time that we've been awarded this grant, and it's for purchase of car seats and educational programs for car seat safety. It's $4,500 this year. I, I can't remember what it was last year, it has gone up each year that we've gotten it, so last year it was somewhere around 2,500 or 3,000. So we've, it's one grant that has gone up.
Any questions from the committee? Questions from the board? Now we've had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Move on to issue number four, County Manager authorized and directed to sign a contract with the New York State Department of Health for the Tobacco Enforcement Grant.
Support.
Second. A motion and a second, Vicki.
Okay, again, this is a grant that we get every year through the New York State Department of Health. It allows for education against smoking, our compliance checks with establishments that sell cigarettes, to make sure that they are not selling to underage people. And it's, this grant is the same amount that it's been for several years.
Any questions from the committee? Questions from the board? Now we've had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. There's already unfinished business to come before this committee. Any new business? Public Health Services Committee is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Trout. I'd like to jump up to Water and Sewer Treatment Management and Operations and just take care of one, two matters there, which is Barton and La Judas is here, and he's going to give a presentation on the two PERs, and then on the phone is Tim Steed from Hunt Engineers on the update on the INI. Then we'll take care of the other matters, other issues at the end of the meeting. Okay, Mr. Hayes, is that okay with you?
That is perfectly fine.
Pete, come up.
Pete. Sorry. I can't see behind me, so I very can't tell.
How are we doing? You're not going to read that whole book, are you?
No. Again, I'm Pete Baker, I'm sure many of you are, can I take this off?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure many of you have had enough of me on this project. We were before the board, I think back in July, we had basically in the March committee meeting, we had committed to completing the PER. Essentially, we had looked at it as we had comments in the DEC to address as part of the PER as well. That's when the committee had elected to go with the, what we call the decentralized alternative. That alternative was advanced in the revised PER. The original PER was submitted in August 2018, so the revisions included kind of the, the new approach with the decentralized alternative, included an update, given the two, two-year-ish delay in project, included an update to the project costs, other changes. Hillside closure was certainly another one that was within there. So the, the end document, as we've submitted, per the discussions we had in the July meeting, a draft to Supervisors Hayes and Bernhardt with respect to the, sorry, sorry about that. With respect to the PER, it was, it's a pretty significant rewrite of the document with respect to that, per the original agreement with the board in, in March, we kind of did this at, you know, at BNL's cost, basically, so at zero cost. So we're here with the draft report that's essentially complete. We haven't received any feedback from the board yet. So kind of here to answer any questions on, on that one, or not, look at, you know, next steps on moving forward.
I will. In your last email, to me at least, I think you highlighted just a few errors in the document that you had sent us prior. Can you just give us a rundown on what those might have been?
Yeah, there was, there was a cost estimate, and the bottom line is that there's, the challenges document, there's probably about at least 30 or so individual kind of cost estimates embedded in the document. So one of the earlier sections, which we identified, where we defined the project, there was essentially one table that we kind of broke it out differently. There was a disinfection line item, that line item carries forward later on in the project. We did a final check, so there was a couple, about $100,000 delta that we, we identified that the final project costs were generally, you know, were consistent with that. So that kind of carried forward into some, the, essentially the workaround, the reduction to what the estimated user cost would be for each of the, each of the districts. So the way this is now configured, the original PER under the centralized alternative had kind of a, a one lump sum, everybody shares the wealth type cost. The way this is now structured is that the, the costs that are located within Sewer District Two, which would be the Five Points Plan and Hillside Closure, are attributed to Sewer District Two users, and the cost associated with Sewer District One, the Willard Plan are largely, you know, affected by the, anyone that's connected to the Sewer District One on that end.
Thank you. To save the public any headache and hassle, I will ask you to open that book for us tonight. Can you tell us what the estimated total project cost is? And can you highlight what the, the user fees are for each sewer district users, please? Just to save the public from thumbing through that same document that I had to.
Yeah. That's not a page I, uh.
If I was creative, I'd filibuster for you, but unfortunately.
I like that. So the revised cost for sewer, so what we did is sewer district, there was a total cost we have in there, and there's also separate cost broken down for the different, the two sewer districts. Okay. So when we talk per the PER, when we discuss debt service, this is where the differentiation between the, what the PER. So when we talk per the PER, when we discuss debt service, this is where the differentiation between what the PER, I'm going to talk and drive here. The PER discusses with respect to the, it's specific to the treatment costs only. The next step, which is, in the prior iteration of the project, we were through next, project next steps, which was really assessing the overall user cost. So within each district, residents of the different communities have different sewer costs with them. There's some communities have conveyance costs. That really was embodied in the map and plans. That's not in here. These costs that are provided here are very specific to treatment costs and the debt service for the plant, and then just long-term O and M for the costs.
So just to be clear, the numbers you're about to give us, each of the different municipalities that run these systems tend to charge operation and maintenance costs that will be on top of this. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, looking for the one table that provides the, I have the user cost, but the.
Feel free to start with the user costs, and I'll see if I can get you a page number on there.
Okay, so we have for decentralized treatment, I have a total capital cost for decentralized treatment. This is Sewer District One plus Sewer District Two. It's $20,542,000. Annual collective user costs are $872,000. To put that in perspective, the estimate for the centralized alternative was on the order of $25 million. Again, those are combined costs for Sewer District One and Sewer District Two.
So that's a reduction of, would you say, just over $5 million from the initial centralized plan?
Correct.
Thank you.
So again, the changes in costs were largely tied to inflationary adjustments we made with the project. There were some additional, there was one additional tankage that was required for at the Willard Plant that was per DEC comment. There was about a $300,000 line item as well. And then for total project costs. Okay. So the, for the Willard Plant, this is Sewer District One, the capital estimate is $8.676 million. That, that's a cost assuming no grants. So as part of this project, the, the county would pursue a typically what's called the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant. That's the WIA grant. That would be a 25% grant. That program actually did not happen due to COVID this year. That program did not get advanced. That would be equivalent to about a $2 million, $2 million grant for the project. The way we looked at this is we separated the grant funds separately for the districts. What would need to be determined in the, in the next steps would be how the, how the grants would be advanced. Our assumption would be that these would be really advanced as two separate projects. They could be on a parallel path, but they really would be on that end. And then for Five Points, the net cost we have in there is $12,118,000. And we've assumed, you know, for, for planning purposes, we provide a table that breaks down a no-grant and a grant alternative. For planning purposes, we have a 25% grant of $3,029,500. $3,029,500 for net cost of, with the grant for Five Points, $9,088,500. There's a significant difference in the Five Points cost with the Willard cost, largely based on the more stringent criteria that's associated with Five Points that discharges into an intermittent stream. Willard discharges into the lake. So the permit requirements are a little bit less stringent for Willard on that end.
Can I ask why the strategy in pursuing this is two separate projects?
It's, it's presented this way. There's really no, the map and plan really would be the next step as far as the, how we pursue that. So the question then becomes, how would EFC perceive if it's, the benefit there would be with two separate projects, you're eligible for grant on, for Willard, $2,060,000. For Five Points, $3,029,000. Under the WIA program, the maximum allowable grant is $5 million. So there's a slight benefit with respect to the grants. There's certainly a, you know, there's a risk to either district that they may or may not get, you know, get, be eligible for a grant. Certainly with Willard, I think there's, both plants have, you know, are in need of upgrades, are desperately in need of upgrades on that end.
Thank you.
So that's, you know, our assumption is these are the base grants. This does not include the other significant issues with DOCS contributions for both projects. Additionally, there's other funding available with, like, under DEC with WQIP, we've broached topics like ESD funding based on, you know, providing a, you know, a plant that has potentially, can provide, you know, an effective wastewater treatment plant for, for new users tying in, primarily along the depot.
And then, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to find it because for some reason I'm not hooked up to Wi-Fi, but were you able to find those EDU, those user costs for us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
My apologies.
I got sidetracked.
Thanks to the board for allowing me to ask these questions.
You don't have a copy of the report?
I do, but it's, what, four, five, six hundred pages long?
It's about 560 pages.
Yeah. You know.
We have copies.
Light reading.
We don't have a memorandum.
We provided it electronically. We have not, not printed hard copies out. We can, we're just trying to, trying to save trees.
I printed one, and my clerk was very upset with me.
Yeah. Order more paper.
Yeah.
So we have for Sewer District One and for Sewer District Two, essentially four line, four components. For Sewer District One, we took that same math I just talked about with and without a grant. The concept of, with Sewer District One with no grant, that works out to about, the debt service, about $201, $222 per EDU. These are annual numbers for O and M short-lived assets. That works out to $423 per EDU. This is Sewer District One with no grant. The same number is assuming a 25% WIA grant. The debt service is reduced to $150 per EDU. The O and M, the short-lived assets, that cost is still $222. That's, that's an ongoing, that's a cost that's not affected by the grant. That nets out to $372 per EDU. That's for Sewer District One users. Sewer District Two, it's quite a different story with respect to the costs. Couple things to note before I talk about Sewer District Two costs. The first thing is it's a smaller user base per our, it's about Sewer District One, we estimated in our prior next step step when we did a, had a workshop kind of discussing the EDUs. Sewer District One, I think about 2,200 EDUs is our estimate. Sewer District Two, which is essentially the Hamlet or Romulus, Five Points, Seneca County, the Seneca County Prison, and there's a small Spring Meadows and some miscellaneous users, a smaller user base. That number with the EDU, the debt service for that without a grant is $506 per EDU. The O and M cost for Sewer District Two are $377 per EDU. And then the annual estimated cost without a grant is $876 per EDU for Sewer District Two. Under the, with the maximum grant approach, and again, this, this is a WIA grant, this does not include any capital contributions from DOCS, $380 per EDU. That's with a, that's a debt service with a 25% WIA grant. $377 per EDU for the O and M, and that, that nets out to $757 per EDU.
Thank you so much for that.
Welcome.
But once you get money from the Department of Corrections, those, those numbers should go down significantly.
Sure, sure. So what, what will happen is the, the O and M cost isn't going to change. So that's typically the, you know, that's the, that's just paying down the project debt. With these numbers, I believe we used a kind of a, not a, we didn't assume any, because I don't think that either district is eligible for hardship financing. So we use, I think, about 3.5% for finance rate. So that debt contribution will certainly bring that down a bit.
One more quick question. On Sewer District Number One, where was the combined district? You had, what, a 2 million gallon sewer plant?
That, the combined, the centralized, I think it was about 1.1 million gallon per day.
What's it now? Now that it's all?
I think they're 0.7, I believe is Willard, and I think Five Points is, and I apologize, there's, there's a lot of numbers. Five Points is about 750,000. The design, our design basis for Five Points is actually higher than the current permit amount, and that was driven by flows into the Five Points Plant. They've had several, at least when we did the PER, they had several exceedances that were above, greater above the flow. That's, that's INI. So obviously, there's been an INI study here, so I think that's, you know, the answer to a lot of that is if INI's addressed the final flow, that, you know, some of the size. And we, you know, there's definitely some optimization during the design process, looking at what those, you know, what the weather impacts are going to be.
Okay. Any more questions for me?
Good. So where do we go from here?
We would like to complete the PER. Again, it's draft, you know, it's, we're comfortable with it. We just are waiting, you know, any comments. Supervisor Hayes or Barnhart, if, you know, there are any comments, we certainly want to, you know, we've offered to kind of either face-to-face or Zoom. We can, we can walk through, if you have four hours on, on a Monday night, you know, to kind of do a deep dive into it. But I think it's, this is a document that's kind of been vetted for, for quite some time. Finalize the PER. You know, the next step really, I think, from the county's perspective, is starting to engage in the conversations with DOCS. And bring DOCS on board. Let's, let's start having those negotiations. Certainly, these, they've seen numbers before. These are updated numbers based on just essentially, you know, it's a two-year, we're assuming a 2022 project start as opposed to a 2020 project start. We currently have, we've been engaged by the county with the next, you know, kind of the revised next steps. That would be effectively setting the county, you know, the county up for the necessary map and plans, non-resolutions, really in advance of, you know, applying for a WIA grant with EFC. Not that it's good news, but that grant program did not happen this year. That's, you know, we anticipate, EFC has been extremely silent on that. We anticipate probably one or 2021, that grant program may be announced. So that, you know, effectively, that would be, ideally, it would be nice to get the project in there to at least have the grant applied for to have, get some answers on that end. So that's, that map and plan is really the next step, and along with, you know, and then I, and SEACR as well. So we would have to complete SEACR process that was started for the prior project. This, this SEACR process is actually simply because there's, we don't have the sewer line, we don't have wetlands issues, things like that to address.
Good. So we are at a point where we're going to want to move this. Well, you got a resolution on the packet for later on. Prove the amended. So you want to move that resolution? Move that later on. We'll do that later on. End of the meeting, get back out of the regular stuff.
All right. Tim on the line.
You got, thank you, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Thank you.
Tim, you still there? Tim Steed? Maybe not. Well, we can, he's not there. Let's get back to the committee, other meetings.
Let me text him again. He was on.
Well, Environmental Affairs, I think that's up next. Supervisor Crown Letter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
He says he's here.
He said he's there? Hold on then.
Tim, are you there?
Hey, Mitch, can you hear me?
We can now, Tim. Thank you. Back to you, Tim.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Tim's going to talk about the INI study?
Right.
That was completed by Hunt?
All right, you're up, Tim. Thank you.
Tim is the new representative.
Thanks. Yeah, and my apologies, I'm going to be taking over the remaining portion of the INI studies from Peter Martin. Hunt and Peter have parted ways, and so however, prior to Peter's, Peter's departure, Peter had, was able to send in the draft reports, send many draft reports into the, into the New York State DEC. And also today, I sent a copy to each community to verify that each community had got a copy of what had been submitted to, to DEC and EFC for their initial comment. The, the reports right as of now, Seneca County Sewer District One was submitted in August. Seneca County Sewer District Two INI report was submitted in August. Town of Varick was submitted in August. Romulus and the Hamlet of Willard was just submitted last week, and the Village of Ovid was submitted last week. The Town of Lodi, subsequent to my review, I did not want that going out, and I had some changes that is going out this week. And I sent some correspondence to Supervisor Barnhart today on that.
Tim, if I can interrupt you, this is Supervisor Barnhart. The Town of Lodi does not operate that sewer system. It is operated by the Village of Lodi. Can you tell me a little bit about the requested changes?
Yeah, so there was, there was actually, there was some, there was some manhole inspections. There was flow monitoring done, and then there was, and then there was some field, some field investigation of manholes. I do not believe all the manholes were suitably inspected, and so I sent a crew back out Thursday and Friday of last week to capture that and incorporate that in the report. So that data came in, was reviewed yesterday, and is being added to the report today and tomorrow.
Thank you for that.
Then that report will be, will be drafted.
I appreciate.
The New York State DEC, I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
Yeah, the New York State DEC has provided some cursory comments on Seneca County Sewer District One and the Town of Varick. I will, I can forward those on. I don't know if the DEC had copied those to the individual municipalities. They, they're, they're very easily addressed. There's a number of clarification items that, I think there was one page of each comments. And so we are looking to address those while we await New York State Envoy Model Facilities comments. And then those, those comments can be made and resubmitted. The one thing in my correspondence with the various communities today, if the members of the community have not received it yet, but I sent, I sent the reports out, and also I requested, I want to sit down and review the reports, and I wanted to review the status of, of the project in general with each community. As there is some money remaining, and I think as Peter Martin had discussed, when I was looking at some of his old notes, was if there was any money remaining, there would be some targeted or strategic sewer televising completed. And that is, that is the next step, what we'd like to do. Now, it wasn't necessarily required as part of the submission to DEC and EFC, but knowing that these are all to the, you know, to the level where we understand there's money left, we want to use that remaining money to do targeted sewer televising. And so I'd be working with each of your, you know, your DPWs to ensure that we can go out, gain access to those manholes, talk to them about the locations we'd like to televise, and get the television of those portions of the sewer completed. And that would help, that would help clarify some of the uncertainties when working with the buried utility, and, you know, further help refine the recommendations. So that is something I'm looking to do going forward as well. So that is, that is the, a brief update for the INI studies, if anybody has any questions.
No, no question here, Tim. This is Supervisor Barnhart again. I'm happy to play the liaison between you and the Village of Lodi, but we really need to get you in touch with the mayor and the operators of that sewer district, or, we need to get you in touch with the mayor of Lodi so that they can take this from here.
Yeah, and I can, I can do that as well. I was looking through some of Peter's old correspondence, and I'm, I'll, I can do that as well.
Yeah, the confusion may be that I'm the former mayor, so that might be why it's easy.
Yeah, I believe so, yep.
Thank you.
We're good. If this is okay. Tim? You there still?
Yes, Mitch.
I am.
I hope I'm not overstepping. Could you provide a brief update? You and I have talked a bit late last week into today on the hillside decommissioning effort that you guys undertook for the county. We've got a matter later on. quick update to the committee on your recent efforts in that regard.
Okay. So in, in March of 2020, we had published a decommissioning plan to the D E C for the Hillside wastewater treatment plant. Some brief comments were received from Don Cardinal of the D E C in May, and we had responded to those. In talking with Mitch recently regarding the transition from Peter Martin, he had shared some comments that he had had, and so I have dug into that, and those comments were, we would like to see a cost estimate for the decommissioning of the, of the wastewater treatment plant. Coupled with, there was a concern with respect to the D E C not being able to approve the report prior to the remaining tenants of the Hillside wastewater treatment plant, you know, that contribute to the wastewater treatment plant, First Light and Hillside, not being connected to their own onsite septic system. So those two items, we did add a cost estimate to the engineer report, I published a new draft to Mitch today, and he can share that with the board, I, and so he has a copy of that. The, the next item is, I, I got on the phone to Don Cardinal from the D E C and was concerning that he wouldn't approve the report because of this lingering issue with respect to First Light and Hillside, or whomever cop, or being able to connect to their, to an onsite sewer system, onsite septic system prior to the Hillside wastewater treatment plant being decommissioned, or at least the report being approved. I, I was concerned with that because obviously, it's the chicken and the egg, and given that there's relatively limited use, limited domestic sewage that's being discharged through the Hillside wastewater treatment plant, I asked the D E C if they could simply put in a holding tank that would be able to be utilized by those individuals for the short term while they design their septic system, while they installed it, et cetera. And they could install a properly sized septic tank, utilize that as a holding tank, and allow the, allow the, the county to move ahead with their decommissioning plans, or at least allow the report to be approved to set up the process to allow the county to move ahead if they so desire. The D E C responded to me on that and said that they would allow that, however, that matter would also have to be approved by the Senate County Health Department. I reviewed that approach with Scott King, and Scott King was in favor of that, and had indicated that he would reach out to Mitch, which I believe he had done as well. So we added a, a discussion with respect to existing and remaining users that previously discharged to the Hillside wastewater treatment plant and collection system to the report, and, you know, after Mitch, after, if you distribute it to the board, or after you have any comments, we can resubmit that to the D E C with the anticipation that they will approve that report, and then allow, and then give you the option of, you know, moving ahead with your decommissioning process, or whatever, whatever you so, or the county so chooses. So that, those were the, the latest efforts on the Hillside decommissioning plan. And then I don't know if it was transmitted before, I looked through some old correspondence that I didn't see it, there was a report, coupled with, there's, there's about eight engineering drawings that accompany the report with respect to identifying what's to be decommissioned, and specifically talking about decommissioning and removal, et cetera. And so I included those in my recent transmission of that document to Mitch.
All right. Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Okay. You good with everything, then? I'm good.
Yep, for now.
Well done, Tim, thank you so much.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. Lot of information there.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, have a good night.
Thanks. Do you want me to, do you want me to hold on, or you, any other questions?
I think we're good for now, we'll be in touch. Thank you very much for all your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Good.
Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Crown and Order, Supervisor Crown and Order, please help yourself stay.
Well, my main questions for tonight were mostly answered with the discussion. My concern was what's going to happen with Hillside? Did I be so bold to ask Mr. Martin what your plans are with the, installing a septic system there, is that your plans, or?
Uh, well, I can.
Are you working with an engineer or a D E C, or?
I'm working with an engineer, and there's several paths forward, which, you know, I can't really get into too much now, but as, as a respect to the decommissioning of the plant, obviously, if the decommissioning goes forward, we're looking at two different options if that.
All right, and I'm just real happy to see the District One and Two getting facilities on board, you know, that are in compliance with the D E C regulations. That would be a big help to the environment. You said most of the things I had were answered tonight. I was on Kewa Lake today, there was a mild allergy bloom, but the perch were biting great.
I'll say that.
Any unfinished business?
I just have a, a piece of information that I'd just like to bring to this committee. I attended the Town of Torrey Planning Board Meeting last night in Dresden, and they reviewed a plan by the Greenwich Power Plant to increase their operations there. The primary issue for this committee, being the environmental committee, is the Greenwich Power Plant is discharging, I wish I remember the number, something like 120 million gallons, I can't remember over the time period, a day, or?
I think it's 130 million gallons a day.
And at 107 degrees, they have been grandfathered into, to some regulations that allow them to discharge at a higher temperature than most trout streams, in this case, it's into the Kewa outlet. I just wanted to, to mention it here so that perhaps we can do some research for ourselves in the event that we might want to make comment at some point.
That's a major issue, and they're supposed to have screens over their intakes, and they don't. So it's basically a fish blender for Kewa Lake.
Yeah, and that, that, that output, that discharge points right at us, you know, straight at our shore, so I, you know.
Love to see them have a circular water treatment, you know, so they don't have to discharge, they can reuse that water.
Wait a minute, one of you said the Kewa outlet, and then you said.
Kewa.
Kewa, oh, Kewa outlet, okay, I'm sorry, I thought Keegan, I was going to say.
It's called Jains County.
Yeah, so, and he said Seneca Lake.
That dumps into Seneca Lake, and that dumps into Kewa Lake.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the Town of Torrey Planning Board sort of abdicated their responsibility in addressing the public and encourage residents to contact the D E C.
And that's the plant that's going to make Bitcoins.
Yeah, my understanding is that they currently operate at 6% in an on-demand fashion when grid, when electricity is needed at the grid. The intention is to go to full capacity at 100%. They have a natural gas pipeline that runs right to the plant, and they will be running a server farm that mines Bitcoin, so, you know, we'll see a dramatic increase in operations there. I'm happy to give you a briefing on Bitcoin.
There will be more water going into Seneca Lake at 107 degrees.
Correct, which is an exemption to the, to the trout stream rules that can only, I think 80 degrees is the limit there, but since they are an existing power plant, the D E C has essentially rubber stamped this, this project.
Yeah, I would entertain a, you know, a motion from this committee to write the D E C a letter expressing our concern about that grandfathered-in clause, discharging warm water into the Finger Lake.
It's so moved.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
He did, but I'll second it too. Yeah, Kyle did.
You'd probably go to the D E C, region eight headquarters and have on, if our attorney could write something up to that effect, I would gladly support it.
Thank you.
Do you need that right before the full board, or just the committee?
Do the board.
Yeah, all around through the board. I'd like the board to.
Yeah.
You want to do that tonight?
If we could, that'd be.
Is it a, in a hurry issue?
I don't think it's going to matter.
You didn't take a vote yet on, on the, okay, all right, let's take a vote.
Why not, crowd?
Yeah.
Do it tonight.
We'll do it tonight. All who's in favor of a resolution to encourage the D E C to have Greenwich install a circular cooling system, or contained cooling system, on favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
There's a four to one.
Can I tell you why I'm opposed?
No.
Because I don't know a thing about it, and if somebody brings me some information, and I'm voting on something that's in, don't have any idea, other than the fact that somebody attended a meeting and you had some information, I don't know if it's factual, I don't know anything about it, and I think it's inappropriate for us to make a motion and move it forward without knowing the facts.
They did.
That's why I voted no.
They did, though. Kyle went.
I don't have it, Cindy, I don't have it.
I don't know what better fact reporting you can, I could give you outside of being on the environmental committee and standing aboard.
I think, I think there's something in Finger Lake's one on it.
I, I'm going to do my research and find out about, and then obviously, my vote didn't matter, so that's okay, I'm just, that, that's why I voted no, I just wanted, I'm not anti-environment because I'm on the environmental committee, but.
It doesn't mean anything.
Just trying to explain why, that's all.
That doesn't matter.
I believe that a resolution was passed.
Okay. Anything else, Supervisor Crown and Order?
That's all I got.
Very good, then, thank you. You're adjourned. Next up, personnel, Mike, get right back up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to call, to order the Personnel Committee. We have four issues tonight to discuss. Issue number one, Board of Supervisors approve creation and filling of clerk part-time position.
I will.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Just to let you know that the, the vacancy committee met earlier tonight, and we approved this moving forward. Chris will give you a little bit of background.
So with this, as you all know, that the Public Works Division was decommissioned, if you will, the commissioner, or the confidential secretary to the commissioner was assisting the superintendent of facilities with all of administrative work. Since her departure, it's actually fallen on Bob as well as the confidential secretary to the county manager. This proposal is to create and fill a clerk part-time position. It would actually, the superintendent of facilities has actually contacted a retiree that was within that position, she was in the position for approximately 30 some odd years, knows it like the back of her hand, and would actually probably do a full-time amount of work in a part-time position. So we are proposing that this is pushed through.
Any further discussion? Any questions by the committee? Any questions from other board members? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Issue number two, Board of Supervisors approve waiver to hiring freeze to fill a clerk part-time position. Can I have a motion, please?
Support. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion here? Pretty cut and dry? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Issue number three, Board of Supervisors approves waiver to hiring freeze to fill an auto mechanic number two position. Have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Chris?
Yes, sir. So the next three that are before you, these positions were already pushed through vacancy and board approval back in March. These were utilized or intended to be utilized to allow those that are in current positions that are at a lower grade to move up and be promoted within it and assume duties that may be left on the wayside within Highway. The superintendent of Highway has requested that we have these waivers approved for the hiring freeze, so that way we can go ahead and implement those individuals into the positions as the snow seasons are amongst us, and he will need individuals within those positions. And just a heads up, we will probably have to backfill the M E O lights.
Any questions? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Issue number four, Board of Supervisors approves waiver to hiring freeze to fill two M E O heavy positions. Have a motion, please?
Support. Second.
Thank you. Chris?
This would be the same as the last one. We have two M E O heavy positions currently open with two M E O lights that would slide into there.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Is there any unfinished business for this Personnel Committee? Any new business for the Personnel Committee? Mr. Chairman, the Personnel Committee is adjourned.
Very good. Thank you, Supervisor, for our. Next up, Finance Assessment and Insurance, Roger Reynolds.
Thank you, Chairman Heisen. I guess we'll call the Finance Assessment and Insurance Committee together, and the first item is to increase the sliding scale income eligibility for senior citizens and persons with disabilities and limited exemptions.
Motion. Support.
First and second. Lisa, can you talk to us, please?
Hi. Yep, a number of months ago, I was in here, and we discussed the sliding scale for the aged and disabled with limited incomes. At that time, I showed you five different options, and the majority of the supervisors were interested in the middle option. So I'm bringing this up tonight to see if we can get it passed, and it got put on hold for a number of months. And that's basically it. What we need to do is hopefully get this passed, create a local law, and get this in place prior to March 1st, 2021, in time for 2022 taxes. And I'm also on September 28th, having a meeting to, with the schools and the villages to try to get all the municipalities on board, and I hope at the town levels, you will each consider that as well, and hopefully, we'll get this through so we can help out our seniors in the low income. The scale right now is at 15,000 to under 22.5, and what we were looking at was 23.5 up to 31.9. Now, it's a sliding scale, so each $1,000 increment approximately would drop 5%. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, I thought we approved it. I, I thought everybody was in it, no? Okay.
We did, we was in it back.
We just, we just decided to pursue it further.
Okay, so.
All we did was we picked a.
A scale to go with.
The scale to go with, okay, so that's a motion, then?
Well, it is. This one here's a motion.
Yes.
If we're all happy with it, I guess.
Didn't anybody make the motion? Sorry.
Yeah, we did, we got a first and a second already.
Okay. I think we should do it.
Aye.
I think that the people need to be. I think that the people need to be, senior citizens, low income.
Yeah, you guys want any more discussion? We'll vote it if anybody's. Just add that, uh, I, I'd encourage all your towns to.
All the towns. We, we hope all the.
This is just for the county too.
In the villages will hopefully look at this.
And adopt it.
Everybody, make it easier across the board for, on multiple levels.
When will this take effect?
It would take effect for the twenty twenty-two tax year, so it would go into effect, um, March first, twenty twenty-one.
We'll draft the law and try and have the public hearing before the end of the year.
If it, if it passes.
This, this is down the road a little further, but I mean, we gotta, we gotta come up with a number, uh, plan to go with to get this started and this is the kind of the first step.
This is the first step because the, this is the end of the resolution. Um, it, it does speak about, uh, adopting a local law. So after, if this gets passed, then we can move forward, Ms. Repman.
Draft the local law and go through the public hearing, et cetera.
Uh, any other questions from anybody? Uh, hearing done. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, all right. Um, what's the next thing? Probably Haley, is it? Haley, you gonna talk to us about the fund balances and reserve?
Do we have any? Yes, sir.
This one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, pursuant to your, uh, fund balance and reserve policy, the county manager and I are to provide you with a report of the, um, current unappropriated operating surplus from the prior year, which would be two thousand nineteen. So you have a report in front of you that shows the unappropriated fund balance at the end of two thousand nineteen is thirteen point five million. The reserve fund balance at the end of nineteen is eleven point eight million. And I gave you some historical references of where you have been over the last ten years as well as showing you, um, the effect of the tax rate, tax levy in comparison to your general appropriations for the year. Um, in two thousand nineteen, you'll see that your operations, uh, had a surplus of two point three million. I gave you the information of where the sales tax has tracked over the last ten years. You see in two thousand nineteen, we brought in twenty-seven point six million. We used two point seven million of the tax reduction reserve that left ten point one million in your tax reserve balance for the end of two thousand nineteen. Now, I also gave you some items for the twenty twenty year that we know. We know what the tax levy and the tax rate were and we know what our general appropriations were budgeted for. We don't know yet what, how our operations and revenue will pan out by the end of the year. But we do know so far we have fifteen point nine million in sales tax. So that's still a gap from where we had budgeted twenty-six point four million. We've used one point eight five million in the tax reduction reserve, leaving us tax reserve balance estimated for the end of this year of twelve point eight million. So your second page of the report gives you the detail of what is in that reserve balances, which include the repair reserve, the technology reserve, your capital building reserve, your nine-one-one communications reserve. And the one that you're interested in for budget cycle is your tax reduction reserve, which is at twelve point eight estimated for the end of twenty twenty. We still have money in your Indian property tax reserve. And then we have the stop DWI's reserve and A T I reserve for a total of fourteen point three million dollars. Do you have any questions about those reports?
Haley, this is very, very helpful for, uh, moving forward as we get closer and closer to budget time. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thanks Haley. Um. I'd just like to note, it looks like that, you know, we have enough reserves to handle whatever storm twenty twenty just put on top of our laps. So, I mean, all that's good. You know, it's not like a deathly scenario, like I'm sure some counties or townships. Right, right, right. We're, you know, we're, we're limping, but we're, I think we're gonna survive. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna win the footrace. Yeah, hit the dodgeball pretty hard, but we're still standing. Right, we're a little bit of limp, but, um, we're gonna win the footrace, I think, so, yeah. Anything else for finance?
Uh, just, uh, briefly, Mr. Chairman, the work on the twenty twenty-one budget is ongoing. Uh, department submissions are all in. Uh, either myself one-on-one or Haley and I have been doing, uh, one-on-ones with department heads for their submissions. The big, open question remains, uh, the economic recovery coming out of the COVID pandemic, in particular, sales tax revenue and, uh, the gaming revenue, um, coming from Delago. Uh, knock on wood, our numbers remain, uh, low, but we also remain part of a, a nine-county region and a, a full state of New York. So we would like to take a little more time before the, the budget is formally filed as a tentative budget with the board. Uh, ask you to think over the next cycle, uh, whether, uh, you'd like to do workshops in any way. I think I can get a, a summary out to you of the, the departments that are seeing an increase. In my, my time since I've been back and in my former time, I had recommended focusing on the departments that had, had variation, uh, in terms of numbers going up to perhaps take the time and effort in workshops to focus on the departments that have had a, had a variance versus, uh, departments that, for lack of a better term, are status quo on, and not seeing a significant, uh, variance from one year to the next. So, uh, perhaps I can work on getting, um, in between this and the next cycle, getting a summary out to you and, and maybe we can have some further discussion about, about workshops and, uh, go from there.
That sounds good Mitch. Um, anything else for finance? Hearing none, I guess we'll adjourn.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Reynolds. Next up is, uh, Mr. Brown, Supervisor Bernal, Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Authorized contract for one-year maintenance extension for Frontier Communications on the county's E nine-to-one telephone system.
Support. Second.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, this is a proposal from Frontier Communications. They're our telephone provider for the nine-one-one center. They're actually the only, um, provider at this time of nine-one-one systems. So it's a proprietary, um, to them, their equipment, their sole source. Um, and it's a maintenance, uh, extension agreement. So for forty-six thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars, we have thirty-two phone lines in the county. At the primary and backup center that go into the nine-one-one center, um, this is twenty-four-seven maintenance on this equipment and it includes, uh, this is not just labor, it also includes, um, telephone servers, some I P devices, gateways, so, um. And like I said, it's sole source. Um, it is budgeted for this year. And I'll be coming to you pretty soon for a brand-new phone system, um, using grant funding, so, at least. But this right here is a one-year extension to our maintenance contract in order to maintain the nine-one-one telephones.
Any discussion? The committee or the board?
I have a question.
Any questions?
Um, do, how often do we actually utilize their service? I mean, does the stuff break down much? I mean, I realize it's forty-six and I don't have.
They're here almost every day.
Okay, so it's.
In fact, Chris Wagner was in my office earlier and Motorola and Frontier, we're both.
Well, I, I can see why you want to replace, okay.
Yes.
Any other discussion? We have a motion?
Yeah, you had a motion made and seconded.
A motion made?
Yep. And seconded.
Second?
Yeah. I was already seconded. I'll second again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Not, committee's closed, Mr. Chairman. Thank you Supervisor Bernal. Next up, Mental Health Services, Mr. Supervisor McGreevy, could you chair this committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mental Health Services, we have one issue tonight. Board of Supervisors authorizes acceptance of contract funds from South Seneca School District to support school-based substance abuse prevention services for school year twenty twenty-one.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Uh, we may have Margaret Morse on the phone if there's any questions. Margaret, are you there? Is she there, Margaret?
Margaret Morse?
Yes, I'm here.
Margaret, is there?
Can you hear me Mitch?
Yes, we can.
Loud and clear.
Is there anything that you would like to add to the?
I'm here. There's any questions?
To the resolution we're addressing?
This is, uh, this is funding to support, uh, substance abuse prevention services. We receive contract funding, um, from many of the districts to support, uh, uh, prevention education and counseling services in the buildings of, uh, three, uh, three of the four school districts.
Yes, okay. Uh, any, any, any other questions? Not, we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the Mental Health Services Committee? Any new business? Not, we're adjourned.
Thank you Supervisor McGreevy. Next up for the Human Services, Chairman Wurst.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, issue number one, Seneca County Board of Supervisors proclaims October twenty twenty Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Seneca County.
Motion. Second.
Okay. Tracy requested, did I read this? So I'm gonna give it a try. Uh, whereas National Domestic Violence Month is recognized each year in October and is designed to raise greater awareness about the issue of domestic violence, provide education and support to families through resources and strategies to prevent domestic violence, and support the goals and ideals of all domestic violence victim advocates, domestic violence victim service providers, crisis hotline staff, and first responders. And whereas the purpose of the National Violence Awareness Month is to mourn those who have died because of domestic violence, celebrate those who have survived and connect those who work to end violence with those in need of support. And whereas Seneca County will join others across the United States and commit to recognizing the need to continue to support programs and activities aimed at domestic violence and family violence, intervention and prevention, and recognize the individuals and organizations that are dedicated to preventing and ending domestic violence. And whereas locally, Seneca County Division of Human Services and the Seneca County Health, Mental Health Department and the Seneca County Sheriff's Office, in conjunction with other local partners, have and will continue to provide services to victims of domestic, domestic violence under the mission of empowering individuals and promoting justice and will mobilize the community so that all persons are free from violence and abuse in their homes. And whereas Human Services Standing Committee reviewed and approved this resolution on September twenty-second, twenty twenty, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors proclaim, proclaims October twenty twenty as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Seneca County. You're welcome. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Uh, do we have any unfinished business for the Human Services Committee? Any new business? Uh, right, we're adjourned.
Good, thank you Supervisor Wurst.
Thank you.
Next up with, uh, Planning Development Agriculture, Chairman Bernhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I call the Planning Development, Agriculture, and Tourism Committee to order. First issue in front of us tonight, Board of Supervisors reaffirms support for New York State to name the Sampson Veterans Memorial Cemetery as its first state veterans cemetery.
Support.
For Mr. Hayes, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Croninwetter. Any discussion? Do you want to speak to it Mitch?
Uh, this would be a second resolution that the board has been asked to support. We had done one, um, I believe it was in late, late nineteen. There had been an expectation that the state was going to make a decision in twenty twenty and to the best of our knowledge, it has not, has yet happened. The special committee that has been formed and has been meeting periodically met, uh, immediately prior to the full board meeting two weeks ago and had, I had urged that the county board reaffirm its support and so that we could, uh, take another, um, outreach effort with the state um, and using the, the reaffirmed resolution as a way to do that, so.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions or discussions from the committee? From the board? Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mitch, do we know if, uh, it's just, I'm sure there's bigger fish to fry in Albany. That's, that's the holdup. I mean, there's no, you know, there's no rhyme or reason why they haven't made an announcement. You haven't got any input on that, correct?
No, a couple of thoughts I could share. I think, you know, the COVID outbreak, I think, perhaps has had the state's attention in other areas. The other thing that happened, uh, earlier this year is, uh, Colonel James McDonough, who was the Director of Veterans Services for the state, had left for another opportunity. So I don't believe that the State Veterans Services Department has a director at the moment. So it's possible that that may have some impact too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Second issue in front of us tonight, designate Seneca County Chamber of Commerce as County Tourism Promotion Agency and authorize application for matching funds program in twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Or?
For Mr. Croninwetter in a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mitch or Jeff perhaps?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm here tonight, um, really for the benefit of the new supervisors. Um, every year, the county, uh, designates a official tourism promotion agency for Seneca County. For the last few years, it has been, uh, Seneca County Chamber of Commerce, so thank you for that. What we are, uh, after we get designated as the Tourism Promotion Agency for the county, we are then authorized or, uh, enabled to leverage our funding through the county occupancy tax to the state. The state has a matching funds grant, is what it's called, matching funds program. So we are able to augment the monies to go for tourism promotion. Typically, uh, we apply for a max grant with the state, which is around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because there are sixty-two counties in the state and most of those sixty-two counties also apply for tourism funding. The, uh, funds are not, uh, usually end up anywhere as close to three hundred and fifty thousand. It gets knocked way down. It's usually around sixty to seventy thousand dollars. For us, it's been breaking out around sixty-seven, sixty-eight thousand dollars for the past few years. This year, we did not receive matching funds, so our budget was already slashed by sixty-eight thousand. I, um, am hopeful, but I do not believe, uh, we will probably see any matching funds out of the state of New York in twenty twenty-one either. However, what this authorization would do would be at least allow us to apply for it. So I'm not expecting it, uh, but it would sure be nice to apply. And as you can see, uh, in your appropriation, it's already at a significantly reduced number than what we would normally apply for. And that's basically because of the occupancy taxes come in, uh, so much lower today. So, uh, all of this to say, um, we would certainly appreciate your support of this resolution tonight to enable us to apply for, uh, to, to be able to leverage the monies, uh, through the county. But, uh, I do not expect it, but nonetheless, we would like to apply for that.
Thank you.
The other thing, uh, just to add, uh, certainly I can answer any questions. I also wanted to point to your attention, uh, our visitor guide for twenty twenty. Very happy that we were able to make this happen in twenty twenty because of a very significant event, uh, the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment. And everyone here, I don't have to tell anyone here what, uh, significance women's rights movement has in Seneca County. It's the birthplace of the women's rights movement. So this entire piece was themed in that capacity. Uh, very happy to feature Seneca Falls in a prominent, uh, prominent way, but all of the counties, uh, all of the towns in Seneca County. So, um, So, this piece was released about a week ago, and it is, in my tenures at the county, this is the fastest, this particular piece has, has gone off the shelves. We can't keep up with demand. So, it is far and wide. It has been disseminated throughout our distribution channels, and it is in, it has been received very, very highly.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Or from the Board?
The matching, I'm sorry.
Please, Mr. Farrar.
I'm sorry. So, Seneca County, we're committing $233,000 to the tourism, and if the occupancy tax doesn't come up to that, then we're gonna make up the difference?
I'll defer to Mitch, but as I understand it, that is what is in the bank, so to speak, right now. So we, that's a number that the county has, but Mitch, I'll defer.
Okay. So, under the, and I had to relearn this since being back, under the enabling legislation, if you will, here at the county level, the, the allocation is based on the last 12 months of known hotel motel tax revenue. And so, the period that's been used most recently is October 1st to September 30th. So with eight days to go, we are at about 259,000 of actual receipts for what is, for a period that will end in 10 days. So, the 233, 549, 84 is, is 90% of what we know. So it is possible that if the county treasurer receives some receipts over the next 10 days, either from a hotel or a B&amp;B, that number could adjust, and we'll be able to amend that as a part of the county budgets when it gets filed with the Board. But that is a real 90% of what's in with 10 days to go in the, in the 12-month period.
Any other 10%?
That stays here at the county for the Board to determine. One of the most recent examples was the Historic Marker Project that Bob had, has led, if you've seen those around town. And then, we've had some discussion intermittently over the last year or so about the Board adopting a grant policy so that if, if a local tourist-related business wanted to seek some funding, that it could be made available out of that 10%. But that, that 10% stays here at the county for the Board to determine how to be spent. And I talked to a local tourist organization earlier today. You may recall a couple of months ago that grant policy came back to kind of start to revive the discussion, and that is still something that needs to happen. So I didn't get a chance, Kyle, to let you know about that call today, but I was thinking that perhaps at our committee meetings next cycle, we could bring that back in for your consideration. And I know one of the sticking points, for lack of a better way to say it, last year was who should be deciding on those grants. We have SCACOT, which works closely with the chamber with a, with a tourism focus. And I think the way it was kind of left was that, that the ultimate decision would stay here with the county board, but that when an application came in, it would be referred over to SCACOT and the chamber, and they would look at it and make a recommendation, but that the ultimate decision would still rest with the Board of Supervisors.
Hopefully, there's, again, I'm trying to get caught up here, but hopefully, there's something in place where if there's a tourist organization applying for a grant, they have some type of accountability system that they would have to, we would require them to, you know, basically give us a financial report of their expenditures and their projected budget, and et cetera, et cetera, an overview of what actually it's being used for. I'm assuming that's in place.
I believe that was spelled out in the draft policy. Dave had done a lot of work on that at the time, and I've got to take a fresh look at it myself, but that was certainly a part of it.
Great, thank you.
Excuse me, Kyle.
Ms. Lawrence Eddy?
Yes, I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong, we gave money from that allocation from that area for Kegel Lake Watershed and Seneca Lake. Is that not correct? Five grand, I do believe, to both.
Five grand a year.
Correct.
Yes.
Came out of the tourism allocation.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And typically, we've been doing that for the last few years, and that's very important that we continue to look at that and do that.
And that has, those entries in the 2021 budget that is, again, has not been filed with the Board yet, those allocations have been plugged in for 2021.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions from this Board?
Yeah, I have one. Jeff, could you, just because I'm new, tell me, what sorts of things do you use that money for?
You're looking at one of them.
Okay.
So, this, we print 100,000 copies of this. It's distributed primarily to our drive markets, which is a six-hour radius. Draw a circle around six-hour radius from here. So that's, that's our target market. So we, we have contracts, for example, with Pennsylvania, all of the Turnpike restos with Pennsylvania. You'll find one of these books at that location. So, this is a collateral, this is called collateral. So this is an example of a collateral piece. We have redesigned our county's tourism website this year and relaunched it. It's discoverseneca.com. That was about an $80,000 expense because we went with the state of New York contractor to make it so when we enter information, it gets uploaded to the state's website in live, in real time, because they're, they're compatible, same company, the same vendor, and advertising campaign. So, for example, this year, we are, we are trying to get ahead a little bit in anticipation of what we expect to be a down year for funding next year. And so, we've launched about a $40,000 ad campaign that will be digital, Google Ads, paper clicks, Facebook, social media, all in the name of attracting people. You just heard a report earlier today about the sales tax being down. So it's, the goal is to drive visitor traffic to Seneca County to spend money. And so, all of those combined, along with obviously things like administration, overhead salaries, that kind of thing. And I would just, real quick, I would just like to make sure everyone here is, is sort of cognizant of the fact that when the 10% went into effect, you know, at the time, Dal Lago was at full capacity and open, and there was a lot of occupancy tax dollars flowing into the account, and there was some consternation whether or not that 90% was a, was a good and fair number. Well, now you're seeing the result of the flip side to that, right? So the Chamber of Commerce and the county tourism agency and promotional abilities are deeply affected by what is happening on the reverse side. So, what happens in one period, it's, it's almost, it's been cyclic.
Except-
I want to make sure people are aware of that.
Except that we did try to get you to go with a bottom-line figure, which would have been good both ways, for the county and for you, after what's happened this year. You would have had that number, and you would have been guaranteed that money.
Understood. Subjective, but, subjective, but understood.
Just for reference, this 233, 549 number, what would this number generally look like without the pandemic?
Last year, it was over 400.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions for the Board? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Schiff.
And if I could, this is the, the one and only resolution going tonight to the special meeting that will be immediately after the final committee convenes, because you have an October 7th deadline, I believe, to submit. So this, this one resolution will be the subject of the special board meeting after the committee's tonight.
Did we not, I thought we agreed to add something else, right?
The waters.
Well, that's, that's an Article 29.
Not really giving Mr. Edmond very much time.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay.
You're not doing it?
Jeff.
Our next piece of business tonight, Seneca County renews memorandum of agreement with the Finger Lakes Regional Land Bank Corporation for 2021 and 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin-Wetter. Ms. Rowe or Ms. Henry?
Jill. Try and make this brief. This is a two-year renewal of an agreement that the county currently has with the land bank. For those not familiar, because I know, I don't think we've had the opportunity to have a lot of exposure with you guys this year, is the land bank was set up by the county back in 15 or so, and we are, basically takes property off the foreclosure list and tries to bring it back into productive use. So, right now, the land bank has been primarily funded through grants, and we are inching our way towards self-sufficiency. I know that was a goal initially when the county had started down this path. But basically, the, this year, we were able to get additional funding from our grant funders to give a greater amount of support to the CEO position, which is, works out of the planning department. Previously, it was a, we've only been receiving about $9,000 contribution towards that salary for 2021. We're able to do one-third of the salary and fringe for up to $30,000. So, other than that, the land bank also has some funding now that they'll be able to work outside of in-kind services that we were getting from the legal department. We'll be able to support legal efforts on its own. And, and we've also identified some funding to support a CFO position. So, none of those need to be in-kind support from the county. And primarily, that's it. Other than that, it's sort of office space, telephone, copying, that kind of thing. But the current, is, current MOA is going to expire at the end of this year, and we're trying to get another one in place, so that way, if grant funding does come available, we've got an MOA in place and makes us competitive for additional grant funding.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. You know, with the expectation that the land bank was hopefully going to be self-sufficient by the time we had to pass this new MOA, is there an expectation of a range of time where we might be able to accomplish that?
There's, there, it depends greatly on the foreclosure process and the kind of fundings that we get. If there's, so, right now, we have not heard that there's any additional grant programs coming out, but the reality is, given the certain times that we're in, we do think that at some point, the state may be coming up with some additional grant funding for basically housing improvements, which is, is really what this is. So the goal right now is, we're hoping that in 2022, that we'll at least have enough funding that we can support a CFO position and keep the lights on kind of thing. The other part that has been, you know, the land bank has had, gone through some growing pains, learning the different process. But what we've really discovered now is we've started to build some strong relationships with, as it could neighborhood housing services and Habitat for Humanity, where they are really going to be sort of our general contractors. So no longer would the land bank really be demoing the houses or doing remodels or rebuilds on their own, because it really has demonstrated that the staff just does not have that expertise and the time to do those kind of things. So, ultimately, those type of relationships could really help us, that we could get property, we could then get it to those entities. They'll do all the work, they'll make a contribution back to the land bank, and hopefully, that kind of, and that kind of relationship will, like I said, keep the lights on and keep us going. So, hopefully, 2022, we might be able to see slightly more self-sufficient land bank.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the Board? Mr. Rowe, Mr. Hayes, would you like to comment tonight?
Mr. Ed?
Would you like to comment on this tonight? I know you serve on the Board as well.
Oh, I have, I have no comment.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Is there any unfinished business before this committee? Any new business before this committee? Planning, Development, Agriculture, and Tourism Committee is adjourned.
Thank you, Supervisor Bernhardt. Okay, next up, again, it will reconvene the water and sewer treatment management and operations, ensure these couple resolutions, and then turn over the Indians, probably going to executive session. Okay, I'd like to call the Water and Sewer Treatment Management and Operations Committee. Issue one, we discussed earlier. Does anybody have any additional comments they'd like to make? Okay. First, issue number two is, Board of Supervisors approves the amended PER, Professional Engineering Report for Seneca County Sewer Districts 1 and 2 Decentralized Alternative.
Wurst?
Second. Any discussion?
I think we're making good progress. I think this is the, this is the way.
Well, it's a $5 million decrease, so that's good already. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. The second issue, or third issue is going to be, Board of Supervisors authorizes segmentation of Sewer District Number 2 and increase the rate of service.
Support.
Second. Any discussion?
If I may, I did hand out to the members of the committee a, a second copy. It has two minor adjustments to it. There was a typo. I would believe it's in the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth paragraph. There was a, it just had a, it had words that didn't belong there. And then, in the 1, 2, 3, 4, from the bottom, it strikes without additional surcharge.
If you don't mind, I'll read it.
Okay, I just wanted to point this out.
Everybody understands, right, sure. Supervisors authorize segmentation of Sewer District Number 2 to increase rate of service. Whereas the Seneca, whereas the county Sewer District Number 2, Sewer District Number 2 consists of two independent sewage collection and treatment systems, since it's acceptance by the Seneca County from the former Seneca Army Depot to its North End and Main Depot. And whereas, the North Depot area publicly-owned treatment works, was provided sewer services limited to facilities within the boundaries of the former Seneca Army Depot in the town of Varick, and most recently occupied by Hillside Family of Agencies, Varick Campus Hillside, and Finger Lakes Tech, First Light, and the lands otherwise owned by the Seneca County Industrial Development Agency. And whereas, the Main Depot area, POTW, continues to provide sewer services to the remainder of the former depot properties, as well as included but not limited to the Seneca County Law Enforcement Center, Spring Metals Apartment Complex, Five Points Correction Facility, and well, as well as the Hamlet of Brahms. And whereas, at the time, the sewer service rate changed, all users of Sewer District Number 2 is $30 per quarter per EDU based on assessed equivalent dwelling units, or EDU, except for by Seneca County Sewer Law Local 3 of 2019 Appendix 2. Whereas, where, whereas, it has been determined as sewer administrator, that due to changes in the operations of the North Depot POTW related to the termination of hillside operations and reduced user activity, costs associated with the operation of North Depot POTW, and the distribution of user charges within the Seneca County Sewer District are unfair and burdensome upon the users serviced within the Main Depot area of the Seneca County Sewer District Number 2. And whereas, Section 1204 of Seneca County Sewer Use Law provides that a POTW service area may be segmented to assist in the fair distribution of user charges. And whereas, a sewer administrator, in conjunction with the Director of Finance, has determined that segmentation of Sewer District Number 2 for the rate purposes is necessary and appropriate to ensure a fair distribution of user charges upon the users in the district. Whereas, a sewer administrator purposes, that the rate, proposes that the rate per EDU for the North Depot segmentation of Sewer District Number 2 be set at $454 per EDU per quarter. And whereas, a right to public notice and opportunity to commit by users of Seneca County Sewer District Number 2 is necessary before the Board may act on this requested segmentation and rate change. Whereas, a resolution has been reviewed and approved by the Water Treatment Facility Manager.
That's what you would be doing tonight.
Management and Operations Committee at its 20, okay, at this, at this meeting, tonight. And therefore, be it resolved that Seneca County Board of Sewer directs the notice shall be given to the users of Seneca County Sewer District Number 2 to- Sewer District Number Two to comment on the proposed segmentation of the rate change set forth herein, and said comments received no later than 5:00 p.m.
It's a question of whether we would set the date depending on the next board meeting.
If in writing or email, and maybe appear in person before the board, the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting at 6:00 p.m. on October.
It would probably be the October date.
Yep. And it's further resolved and approved following public comment, the Seneca County Sewer Administrator is authorized to take action consistent with the segmentation of Sewer District Number Two, and the effect change herein proposed becomes effective at the billing period commensurate in 1 January 2021. So, I have a motion, uh, motion in a second. I have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Carry. Sorry, flipped the page, I shouldn't have flipped that page. So, we have any unfinished business?
Chairman Hayes, I wanted to let you know that Jeff Prack came from Albany. He's with First Light. I didn't know if you'd permit him an opportunity to address the committee.
Yes, sir. Jeff?
I just wanted, um, thank you, sir.
We need you to come to the microphone, so we have the public, everybody can hear you.
My name is Jeff Prack. I'm Director of Facilities at First Light. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, and we're here to work with part of the community to make this transition go smoothly out there. There's some different options that we're working on, and as that progresses, I'll be working with Mitch to let you all know how it's going. And if you have any questions, he has my contact information. Feel free to reach out to me. If they don't have any questions. Okay. Yes, sir.
You did hear the engineer from Hunt Engineer talking tonight, right?
Yes. Yep, and, uh.
About the holding tank?
Yeah, we want to look at that. There may be, a holding tank, it's a great idea. We want to look at, can any rainwater get in there, how often it will need to be pumped and so forth. So, that is one of the options that we're looking at right now. Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Long ride, just one question.
No.
Thank you.
Jeff, if you want to move to Seneca Falls, we have water and sewer all set for you, okay?
You got bunkers?
No bunkers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that must be your adjourn now.
I got a question for Haley. Haley? Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Couple. Can I get some, we have some numbers for Sewer District One, Two, and Y. What we're at now, before we start doing our budgeting.
So, at the end of this month, we'll be doing the third quarter billing, and as soon as we do that billing, we'll put together that.
Okay. All right.
I do have a question. Mr. Hatman, you were going to get to me the, some better numbers on, how much this actually cost?
I went through Mitch on that. I thought he talked, followed up with you. We had on Friday.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, this was, probably nobody knows how much this is going to, what this costs per year if we're running.
For, for Hillside?
Yeah.
$100,000, right?
Yeah, ninety all day, yeah.
So, that's where, that's where we come up with the $433 of E D U.
You don't, you have the units in here or not?
Yeah.
The unit's going to go from 30 to 400.
Fifty-four at the Hills, at the Hillside or north end, north depot.
Okay. We'll be acting on this next, next meeting then, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, you're adjourned.
That's it, adjourned. No other questions. It's all yours.
Yeah, Indian Affairs. Mr. Klein, what are you in charge?
I don't have anything to speak of at this moment.
Um, if the.
We're going to need a motion to go into executive session to do.
Of your committee.
To talk to Brian, Brian Lazada.
Make the motion.
Okay, I'll read it for you instead of walking all the way back there.
There you go.
Pursuant to Section 105, 1D and F of the New York State Open Meetings Law, I move to enter into executive session to discuss proposed pending or current litigation and our personnel matters and invite the filing individual, all members of the Board of Supervisors, the county attorney, the county manager, Director of Plan and Community Development, and the personnel officer. That was your motion, huh Cindy?
That is it, yep.
Second.
Tucker.
Okay, same there. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You going to take any action, you don't think?
No.
No action you're going to take? We will come back out after a while. Adjourn.
1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 178 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1030 1031 1032 1033 1034 1035 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1058 1059 1060 1061 1062 1063 1064 1065 1066 1067 1068 1069 1070 1071 1072 1073 1074 1075 1076 1077 1078 1079 1080 1081 1082 1083 1084 1085 1086 1087 1088 1089 1090 1091 1092 1093 1094 1095 1096 1097 1098 1099
I'm going to use this for something else.
I can leave.
After this.
After that, yeah.
They don't return back.
Well, they want you in here.
Ow, as Lexley.
Yeah, so they caught me at 22 now.
Look at that dust.
And this is your room?
Yeah.
Somebody did a little fighty here about 10 minutes ago.
Hello? Guess we're on. Okay, I'd like to call the special board meeting to order and please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Going to do roll call first?
I don't know.
Roll call.
Yep, we can do a roll call. Target's here now.
Wait.
Good exercise.
Thank you, Mike.
Here.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Here.
Supervisor Garret Lorenzetti?
Here.
Supervisor Brownell?
Here.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Here.
Supervisor Borst?
Here.
Supervisor Hayes?
Here.
Supervisor Ferrara?
Here.
Supervisor Cronenwetter?
Here.
Supervisor Lott is absent. Supervisor McGreevy?
Here.
Supervisor Heisen?
Here.
Supervisor Trout?
Here.
Supervisor Clear?
Here.
Supervisor Enzlow is absent. You have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, please rise to the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. An open session?
Yep, same quick.
Okay, planning development, agriculture, and tourism.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Designate Seneca County Chamber of Commerce as County Tourism Promotion Agency and authorize application for matching funds program in 2021. We'll move.
Second. Second, two seconds on that, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Unfinished business. New business.
Make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to sections 105, 1D, and F of the New York State Open Meetings Law. I'd like to invite in county manager and the human resource officer.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay, we're now in executive session.
I can leave.
After the.
After that, yeah.
Don't return back.
Well, let's say once you're in here.
Yeah, so they caught me cutting 22 now. Look at that dust.
And this is your time.
Uh, 1966.
Yeah.
Somebody did a little.
Hello? Yes, we're on. Okay, I'd like to call the special board meeting to order and please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
You gonna do roll call first?
I don't know.
Roll call.
Yep, we can do a roll call.
Standing roll call.
Target's here now.
Good exercise.
Thank you, Mike.
Here.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Here.
Supervisor Garland, Lauren Zetti?
Here.
Supervisor Brownell?
Here.
Supervisor Barnhart?
Here.
Supervisor Borst?
Here.
Supervisor Hayes?
Here.
Supervisor Ferrara?
Here.
Supervisor Cronenwetter?
Here.
Supervisor Lott is absent. Supervisor McGreevy?
Here.
Supervisor Heisen?
Here.
Supervisor Trout?
Here.
Supervisor Clear?
Here.
Supervisor Enzlow is absent. You have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, please rise to the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. No concession?
Yep, you guys say them quick.
Okay, planning development, agriculture, and tourism.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Designate Seneca County Chamber of Commerce as county tourism promotion agency and authorize application for matching funds program in 2021.
We'll move. Second.
Second, yes, second on, two seconds on that. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Unfinished business. New business.
Make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to sections 105, 1D, and F of the New York State Open Meetings Law. I'd like to invite in the county manager and the human resource officer.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're now in executive session.[199.62]